... We're calling George. Welcome to the Kandahar Central School Board meeting. We're glad to have you here. I'm not going to read the rest of this because there's nobody new. All will break down at this meeting. It is a business meeting. And we will move forward with the agenda. Questions and comments on the floor.
Ann Marie Murphy.
All right. I'll be short. One is, I want to say thank you. I've been part of the literacy committee. And it has been, first of all, we've been given time. We spent a couple quarter days going through trying to look at different basels, trying to see which would best fit the criteria that we have been looking at. And then I had kind of an epiphany because one of the basals, I think the company was Journeys. According to the ed research, out of the three that we were looking at, it had gotten the worst ratings. It was like out of 30 points, like it got maybe 14 out of 30 in certain categories. Where the other ones were like 25 out of 30, 24 out of 30. And then I was like, well, who uses Journeys? And this and that, we've talked about it because we wanted to go visit other schools. And someone said, well, geez, Fonda uses it in most of their classrooms. Not all, but most of their classrooms. So I said, you know what? We need to figure out what it is that they're doing. Because here they're using, out of the three research-based basals, the one that did the worst. And yet their ratings are killing. And then someone spoke up because their family member is on the board of education there. And they said, well, there's five reading specialists there, five. And their co-ed, or their special ed co-teach teachers are full-time embedded into the classroom. So like right now, we don't have a one full-time, let alone five full-time AIS teachers. And our poverty rate is much larger than Fonda's. So I'm thinking, and I get that Fonda's larger than we are, but we don't have one full-time person. They have five. They have less poverty. We have more. And they're using the basal that according to research was the least effective. So it just seemed to be an epiphany of you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a basal series. I really think the support is what's doing it for the Fonda School District. And I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. That I, you know, it was like one of those things that we had these minds, we've been talking, we've been really, but it's support. I mean, they're, they're killing it. In the Albany Business Review, I think they're like 17th out of 83 schools. I think we ranked 63rd. So, and I know that they're 11 miles away, but for a plane, ranked 53rd. So I just kind of compare myself up and down the Mohawk Valley because that's kind of what I know. And it just jumped out at me that that might make a difference in the long, you know, long term for our kids. I think you.
Eddie Barnes. You're next.
Presenting?
Oh, you put a check mark by your name. You don't want to?
No.
No, you don't want to say anything?
Except her hello.
No, if you had a question or a comment.
I just wanted to be announced, because I thought the lockdown.
No, you didn't have a comment or anything?
No, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Jeanne Gooden.
Can I just sit or do I have to stand? You're sitting.
Just announce yourself if you would, just like any other time. You can certainly sit if you'd like.
Well, I mean, I've probably spoken on this a few times as a teacher about smaller class sizes. But tonight, I'm just going to talk as a taxpayer. And I have seen my, the value of my home depreciate by about 25,000 in just two years when I had it appraised. Not assessed, this was an appraisal. And I remember, I used to ask parents of who came here from wherever. Why did you come here? What's, you know, coming out from, to the hens for lands. Smaller class sizes, that was always the very, very first thing that they said. So maybe I'm just being selfish now. I just, I really, I'm concerned about our community. I really enjoyed the diversity that our community had at one time. We had a healthy population of lower income, middle income, and then maybe a smattering of, but it seems, I mean, it's nice to have a balance. So I'm talking as a taxpayer tonight. And I think if you really want to pull people in, we can't wait for industry. We can't wait, that we really need to offer something where people, when they say, you know, where am I going to move to live? I work in Albany. Should I move to Fonda or should I move to Kandahar? They're probably going to pick Fonda or someplace that has smaller class, you know, we were something different. And that's all.
Okay.
Jen Field. Okay. Well, I didn't plan to say this, but I'm going to follow up since we've talked about small class sizes. I think that that is one of the things that is most valuable. I'm certified both elementary and secondary. And I taught 10 years in Sharon in elementary and 10 years at secondary level. And when I first started in Sharon, we had 450 students. We now have 250. But our class sizes remain small. And what I mean by that is the eighth, the whole eighth grade is 26 kids. But they are divided into two classes. 12, well, one kid is self-contained. So we have, I have 12 in one English class and 13 in the other. And because of that, I can do so much more. But eighth grade is not where it needs to start. It needs to start in the elementary. There needs, that's where the small class sizes have to be. We rarely, at the elementary level, have more than 15 or 16 kids in a class. And that makes a huge difference in terms of kids being able to strengthen their reading and writing. And we have a 63% free and reduced lunch rate. So we are pretty high there, but our, we are pretty high up though in terms of our numbers in the capital region. I think we were in the 30, 40 range. So small class sizes, maybe a difference. So I'm just going on that. What I originally came here to ask about was on April 13th, I had a question about semesterizing of courses. And I'm going to say this again because I don't feel, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding because I'm not always the sharpest knife in the drawer. But my, I want to talk about semestering and that the fact that I believe it's discriminatory. And all classes should count for all kids. I don't care if you're in advanced classes. I don't care if you're in music classes, phys ed classes, technology classes. Whatever it is, every kid has a different interest level. And everything should count. It shouldn't be, oh, well, your class doesn't end until the end of the year. Honey, sorry, it's not going to count for you. That's not fair. It's not the way things were done before. Okay, they used to do it whatever after two semesters or three semesters and all the classes would count, whatever. I don't care, however you want to do it. If you want to semesterize classes, then semesterize them all. You know, but it has to be fair for every single kid. You cannot discriminate. And I don't care if it makes a difference in the top 10 or not. Some year it might, some year it might not. You know, and I just, I think that's discrimination. So. The other thing that I want to talk about that isn't, still isn't making sense to me, and maybe I'm not seeing the logic behind it, but I don't understand why kids have to add or drop their classes before they've taken them. Especially when it comes to electives and higher level courses that maybe they don't have to take for graduation. And they get into the class and they decide, oh, you know what, this is too hard for me. I don't want to take it. Or I have too much on my plate. I don't want to take this. Maybe I want to take something else. Maybe I want to take basket weaving instead of physics. Okay, I don't know. But they should be able to have that option. September 1st, they haven't even started classes yet. How do you know? When you're in college, you've got two weeks to make a decision. Oh, I don't want to take this class before you get penalized. Should be the same thing in high school. This should not be something where, oh, you have your schedule. Too bad, you should have made that decision last year when we met together. You know, you had to make some tough choices. Well, I didn't know because I didn't take the class. So I just think, you know, if a kid is taking business, accounting, and they're like, oh, no, this is not for me. They don't need that to graduate. Or maybe they want to try it. So I still haven't gotten a good, a clear answer as to why we're doing that. Because that just doesn't seem fair to the kids. And the other thing I just want to bring up was that on Monday, we had a really great presentation, by the way, on the budget. I thought that you guys did a good job and you were very clear on stuff. And I thank you for that. But I got a robo-call about the chicken barbecue. The chickens are coming, the chickens are coming. But I did not get one for the budget hearing and candidates. And that, to me, was really sad because this is where people should be, is in here.
That's your assignment.
I understand that. I'm going to finish my statement because I'm being interrupted.
We have five minutes for a reason.
Yes, I hear you. So would somebody else like to talk about the fact that I feel that Chris Fatta and Jim Hill didn't get an opportunity to be able to share their stuff with the whole community?
Erin Shaffer.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Just as a way to, I don't know if everybody's been here for this, but as a way to assign some of these things to someone so it's not lost in a shuffle. Mrs. Murphy, I believe we probably try and have Mrs. Ward get back to you about. Mr. Mullen, I believe, has been ahead. Mrs. Frinshall get back to you about your questions. And Mrs. Field, I think we're kind of all over on this. Maybe some is for you and also Miss Lisa.
One of the things the board had asked before was just to do a follow-up if I had, if there's a conversation last meeting. Mrs. Dop had asked a question about doing exit surveys with families. I had a personal conversation with her. We talked about both entrance and exit surveys with families with what would most likely be an increasing transient population just because that's the movement around the area. It would be interesting to find out why families come to the district, but also why families may choose to leave the district and go someplace else. So at our administrative team meeting this week, we talked about drafting a protocol for doing that, that the building where the children were would be doing that because that's where you know folks. And then Mrs. Dop offered also and agreed that she would take a look at it with us. So we'll be working on that.
Okay. Next up, we have a report. Student representative.
I don't have much tonight. School's winding down. People are also winding down. People are excited to do the van trip. Not much else. Prom, that's coming up. Not much else has been happening. It's really just been slowing down.
Okay. Then next, we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Oh, yeah, I'm upset, you know, to me, exactly. Trump about the students who are confused about the semesterization. Has that cleared up at all to your knowledge?
Ah, not to my knowledge. I don't know. Maybe it has. Nothing else has been really brought up to me.
Can I ask another question? The last our presentations, what's the conversation around this?
What was the last our presentation?
I believe each group participated by making pitches of recommendations that they were.
Oh, yeah. With that, I think with, like the clear winner of that, I think it should have, like their plan should have also been presented to the student body about that. And I'm not sure if everyone was aware of who won. Well, no, everybody knew who won, but everyone was confused why they won, like why, why that choice was picked and what that choice was too. And I think everyone liked the idea of it, but I guess some of the groups that presented took, had, I guess, felt some, some of the feedback was a little harsh, I guess. That's, that's what I heard. A lot of people liked it though, know that. But I think there should just be more talk about, yeah, like why, why the pink team won and what their, what their choice was. So they can know what is going forward with that and what to expect.
So in developing this week's, this agenda, there was, there's not really an opportunity to circle back around to some either information that the board asks or some tasks that are being worked on. So I suggested, just talked about that, perhaps something that would be of use would be to have a little superintendent's report just to go over a couple of things that are circled back around or some work the board needs to do. So she agreed, so we'll give it a try. You all can decide if it's useful to you or not. So there's really three things today. One is just about to finish up the refusal for the state assessments. And we have that data up there in, so just a couple of items because we have done, completed now both the 38 ELA and math assessments. So what we have seen in our statistics, which we keep and that also goes to BOSsies and generally newspapers call and ask about it. So this is all the data that we shared with them, was that we had a slight decrease this year from last year in terms of our total percentage of students who refused both the 38 ELA and math assessments. And, excuse me, that was most notable in grades three and four. Grades five through eight stayed about the same. So that's just a data piece of information. It was also reported in some of the newspapers. This is some of the detail behind it. Because what we give the newspapers is the general overall for the 38 average. So that's just information.
Question? Oh, go ahead. These are people that actually refused. It doesn't include people that were sick that day or whatever?
Correct. The students who might be ill would have a chance to make up the assessment if they were participating.
What did the students who were opted out do during the assessments?
They have, they have a location where they go that's supervised. Students can bring work or some quiet activities to do.
And how do these refusal rates compare? State, local, region?
Regionally, regionally, we're on the higher end.
And then the second, I know we've talked about this before, but it might be good to reiterate, how does this impact us from state ranking and all that stuff?
I would say right now that that is very much in, up in the air for two reasons. Number one, we're making the shift from no child left behind to the Every Student Succeeds Act. And number two, because the tone at the federal level is a little unsettled right now. And there are some changes that are occurring under the regulations for every student succeeds. So I can't really answer that question right now, it's in flux.
But the rankings that just came out, did these impact those?
That would be a part of it, yes. Performance on the 38 assessments is one of the considerations for the business rankings, yes. All right, so that was the first one. There's two, two pieces of information and then one actual work piece. So the second piece that came up in a committee meeting and then was briefly talked about at the board was the participation of students in our free and reduced price lunch program and their participation in accelerated, which is ACC or AP classes. Patty, can you pull that up a little bit because that's a little bit small? Thank you. So this is for this year, 2017. We were just looking at the students in seventh and eighth grade and then 10 through 12th grade who are participating in either accelerated courses or AP courses. That percentage compared to the total percentage of students in the grade level who are participants in the free and reduced price lunch program, which is right now the definition for poverty. It is not a piece of data we've ever looked at before, but it is a piece of data to pay attention to now, or at least consider now, at least have in our consciousness now that our poverty rate is above 50% in the district. And we just never really consciously looked at it before. So we're doing that now. The principals have that information. And certainly it's something that as we are scheduling students for classes, again, we're just taking a look at.
As much as we've had Mrs. Smith here now for a couple of years, Brad?
Is that anything?
Yeah, Brad. Two that was never, I mean, like you said, we never really thought about it. Was it anything she ever brought up in all the training she's done with teachers and these graders or anybody really?
No, and I think the reason why is because you hadn't, the district hadn't hit that tipping point yet with the last school report card, the 15, 16 report card that was shared up on a little while ago. That, that was, that report card offers us that view of the 55% district-wide. When we look at real-time numbers right now, it still is about 55% district-wide, but it's 65% at least still.
I'd just like to make a request if the rest of the board also would like to hear this, that once you finish having some discussions with the administrators about the significance of these statistics and what might be done to reduce that discrepancy that we see in the numbers, if you could report back to the board on that. And I think that would be a very interesting and useful report. If everyone agrees.
Absolutely. Associated with that, I think what would be of interest is, I know this year, we did a different program in the ninth grade.
Yes.
For the accelerated.
Yes.
I would like to see that specifically because we took a different approach.
Yeah, we will, right.
Before we get to curriculum for next year so we can look at those things. And, I'm sorry, just, a connected thought. Looking at whether, because we did do it differently this year, whether there's students that dropped out and how that percentage of economically disadvantaged might be in there as well.
In that, in that structure.
In the ninth, in the ninth grade.
And then in the grade.
Because I could envision that maybe disadvantaged people didn't necess, students didn't necessarily get the same home support and don't make it all the way through the year. So I think it would be important to look at that aspect of it. Because we do have this new program we're trying, which is a very different kind of program.
So not just dropped out, but performance, maybe the class itself?
Yep.
Class is.
We can have a report, I'm not, towards the end of the school year, we certainly can do a report on the performance, that may be a summer thing because we'll have to get the grades in.
Yeah.
But certainly the kinds of things we're considering as, as we're asking the principals to work with their teachers around this issue, we could bring back to, shall we say that, I don't know how robust our agenda will be next meeting in two weeks, but we could either do it then or the meeting in June. So the latest would be the meeting in June, depending upon how the agenda goes. Okay.
And I think the curriculum aspect of what we're looking for is, you know, forward for next year is something that should be on one of those agendas coming up.
Okay, thank you. So the third thing is, three years ago now, somebody helped me with time flies, the board decided that an exit budget survey would be helpful for information. It's easiest to go through the questions in paper format because sometimes there's only so much you can do on the computer. So I've been, has it been three, is this our third year maybe?
I think so.
This is maybe our third year. So I wanted to take the opportunity for the board to have a look at the budget survey. You had also asked for a question around the alternate veterans exemption as well. So if you would be, so just take a couple of minutes just to take a look at the questions and then provide any edits or other pieces of information that you might want. Remember, we try to keep the budget survey short so people will complete it. And we also offer it in online and paper formats. So we have folks have the opportunity. So the first question is just how did individuals vote? Followed by the second question for if people would share the reasons why they voted yes. It's a multi-response question. The response stems have stayed the same as they have the past two years. And we always provide an other box where people can write in additional information if one of our selections is not their selection. The third question is about sharing the reasons why an individual would vote no. Again, that's a multiple stem response that also provides an other box so people can write in their own comments as needed. The new question this year is question number four. The Board of Education is considering the alternative veterans tax exemption. This provision allows the board to authorize an exemption for a percentage of the property tax owned by eligible veterans. The board would like to gather community input regarding this exemption possibility. To go, that's the question. So one thing is, what does the, is the question clear enough? Because sometimes we want to make sure it's as clear as possible. The second piece is, we have done some things prior on the website around the veterans tax exemption. We would put that information back up so that people would have it ahead of time and before, right. So they would have it so they can consider if this is a question that the board still wants to have as part of the survey. We'll get that information back up on the website so that people know. And we would have a paper copy available at the actual polling day if people want to take a minute to take a look at what it means. So that's the question under consideration for this year for the budget survey for the board. Right, we'll get to the other.
Oh, number five is kind of important to us, isn't it?
It is.
Oh, number five?
You betcha.
So yeah, that's a standard.
Not laughing because I think it's funny. I'm just laughing because it's becoming, you know, more everywhere. It's that maybe we need more information about where people get information and how they'd like to gather information.
Definitely.
Well, we, we, this is a standard question. We've had.
We also put like a sub-question to this, and how would you like to receive information?
We could do.
Something to that.
Yeah, add an additional question.
Or is there another way? Or is there another way I'd like to receive information?
Or maybe you can even do a second, just to make the form easier, a second column that says your preferred method and list, put the same list.
Yeah, the way this, the way this program kind of works, we'd have to have it as another question.
That's fine, then add it as another question possibly.
We don't have on here, although it's still too new and not a lot of people have it, but we should probably add the district mobile app, although we hope that's a growing thing. If nothing else, we can remind people, oh.
There you go. We don't have Instagram on there, you don't do Instagram.
I think number four is what we had talked about as a board. I'm perfectly happy with it.
I'm sorry, send it in here.
I think number four is perfectly fine. It's, I think it's representative of what we talked about as a board. So I appreciate you putting that together.
Right, except it doesn't have details. They don't, they don't know, they're going to look at that and go, what does it mean? What's it going to mean to me, me, Joe taxpayer? But if we can have that information somewhere for them to.
Well, we did have an estimate. That's a good point. We did have an estimate when we talked about it in the board.
We did.
I don't remember what it was.
We could look that up. So we could put that on here on the question. The other piece is the third, the third stem just says, I would like more information. Please contact me. Here's my name and phone number. And then there's a text box that would go right there. So perhaps if you didn't want to make a decision, but you would like to have a conversation with someone, then we can make a personal outreach to people and have that conversation. But we could add in the, the dollar, not in the app.
I think if I remember correctly, wasn't it as a percentage of your tax or an average per taxpayer or something?
Yeah, we have an average per taxpayer.
Is it easy enough to put that in here or do we keep that as a separate document? Is it easy enough to put that in here or do we keep that as a separate document?
I think.
Or it's up on the website? I don't know.
I think we can just put that number that we came up with and just say estimated.
Potential estimated impact.
You know, an average homeowner in Kansas City.
I think you better put it both.
I think it should be anywhere that we talk about it. People don't want to know, what does this mean?
What does it mean?
Right.
Before you can really answer that, you know, effectively.
So, then the, the fifth question is just about information that's a standard question. And then the sixth one question is just about the demographics. And this, and that hasn't really changed. What we know is that people connected to the school and our senior citizen population vote. But that's everywhere as well. So, that just, that just confirms that. And then the seventh, the seventh question, which is, is just really, what is your connection to the district? We're just ready to get some demographics.
One, one thing, by getting those demographics and how they want to be reached, we might be able to actually do targeted communications then too, because we'll have some insight.
Thank you. We'll get that all wrapped it up and ready to go. It'll be available next week at the budget.
So, the intention is to have it for anybody who comes to vote, they can do this on paper.
They could.
But if they didn't come and vote, they could still do the survey online.
Yeah.
You mean, they still have to, they still have to vote in order to do this stuff? Because we're asking them how to.
Ask how they vote and why, why you voted yes or no.
Why would we put it up online as an option for people and have a little slip of paper that tells them how to get to it and put it on the website, tells how to get to it? The majority of the respondents, you find paper most efficient. They can do it, believe it or not, they can do it right there and then they can go on their way. So, it doesn't require an extra step. So, sometimes Lo-Tec can be very helpful.
So, last time we did this, was any, did anybody do it online?
Uh huh, a few people.
Very small number.
I'm just saying, if this were.
Seventeen responses over zero, I guess.
But then there were many more in paper.
But there were many, many more in paper. So, I was saying, that's just the online.
Right, you're right there and you just do it.
Because if this were, if this was online, I mean, no, they didn't necessarily vote.
Correct.
They just went online and thought, oh, this is.
Which you could do.
We, well, one option you could do is you could make question number one required. And if you don't, so if you don't skip two and three. But then, but then people could also decide to, you, you just don't know. Just to give an answer, you don't.
Right, and why would you phone out if you didn't come and vote?
But, you know, I don't know. Could have, they could have, sure.
I could, or I could see if we had an option on here, I did not vote. And then on question three, you know, it says, I, two is yes, three is no. Four could be why you didn't vote.
Yep.
And you could just leave, we could just.
And just for the online one, changes in adding number four and, you know, of course.
Right, why didn't you?
Yeah.
You're right.
We could have two versions, that, that, like, that, that the why you didn't vote would be the online version, but the paper version where people are voting.
There, there, yeah.
There is right there.
Because then if they didn't have transportation or whatever.
Whatever might be, right, that could be nice to know that too.
It, it would be nice to know why people aren't engaged in the process. I agree.
So, we have three sets of minutes to approve as we move forward in items.
Second.
Discussion on this.
I'll make the motions.
Discussion on this.
Aye.
Post, have stayed.
Aye.
You're on the twenty-sixth?
On the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that was for the closest.
You're on the twenty-second. Twenty-sixth.
You and I were both not there anyway.
Second.
Discussion on this. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, have stayed, have stayed. Next, we have our budget transfer schedule. And we need a motion to approve. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Discussion on this.
I have one question. The transportation, transfer, it was just a lot of money. So, I was curious what kind of extra trips and sub-costs we were talking about there. Because ten thousand dollars seemed like a lot of money for extra trips.
Um, there is, let's see, we took ten thousand out of subs and put into extra trips. He, at the end of the year.
Is that for the whole year?
Uh, I have to go look to see if we took any more out of the subs into, to put in the extra trips. But towards the end of the year is when all of those, those extra runs are being done for a trip, like sports, stuff like that.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
A opposed, have stayed. Next are the bills, general federal and school lunch.
Second.
Discussion on this.
I have a few questions. The A thirty-four warrant, check warrant, A thirty-four. The Dell seventy-seven fifty-four, I'm assuming you bought computers?
Yes.
And was that planned, um, rotation replacements? Was that something new and extra?
So, planned wrote, those are planned purchases for teacher computers. So, we have a, um, we have a spreadsheet of our student and staff. So, it's part of that rotation.
Okay, so that's what's on the surplus list, which we'll talk to you later then.
Yes.
Um, Kim Hayes, it was to a person's name, so I just had to ask. Forty-one sixty-six.
Yeah, she runs with the center, so she's one of the, she is a contractor.
And Aircoy Lanes, I assume it was for using their lanes for the bowling season?
Yes.
Leonard Bus Sales, twenty-two thirty-four fifty. Did we buy something?
I believe that's repairs of, um, that Harold does.
Okay, they do repairs first here, I didn't know that. Okay, I thought we had repairs done.
Right, we're doing a lot of stuff that's, all the buses are leased at this point, but there's still things you gotta buy. Buyers and builders and.
No, it was just because it was from bus sales versus a repair shop, that's why I was wondering.
What's the, what's the number?
Twenty-two thirty-four fifty.
Fifty-two nine one six is the check.
Fifty-two nine one six two three four seven.
Uh, if it would be all right, would I could get detail on that and also on the extra trip? A little more detail behind that and we can upload it tomorrow's board notes.
And I just wondered what the stadium system was. It was fifteen hundred ninety-two.
That is actually ball.
Is that the new sound system thing?
No, I don't think so.
Isn't it the reconditioning of the football helmets?
Yeah, the football helmets, they have to redo.
And new stickers.
For the Canjo Fort Plain helmets for next year since.
So, the helmets are not changing, we're just changing.
We're putting a sticker on the helmets.
What about the jerseys?
They're not changing next year.
We just got new ones, didn't they?
Yes, yes, and parents, fathers.
I was gonna say, it's been a lot of money, I know.
So, um, so we made, in our, in our, we decided to be, um, in our agreement with Fort Plain, as we were discussing the combined football at the varsity level, that we decided that for this year, for a couple of years till we figure out how all this is going to work, we would just have both schools stickers on the helmets.
Any further discussion, Mark?
This is just my senility speaking. Home Healthcare Partners Corp, which one is that again? I know it's a recurring one.
Yeah, that's the nursing agency that uses to ride on a bus from, for one of the specialist students.
Is the treasurer report on another document?
Yes.
Okay.
Coming up next, actually.
Okay.
Any further discussion of the bills? On favor?
Aye.
A vote, have stayed. Next is the treasurer's report for March.
Motion.
Second. Now, I can't see.
I have one question on the school lunch one.
Okay.
I had the same issue as Mark, just that I could not remember what Heartland Payment Systems was.
That's the, where parents can pay the school lunch accounts online, the credit card and contract with this Heartland Payment so that the money's just automatically put into our account and have you run reports.
So, this isn't a fee we're paying them, this is actually the transactions.
That's the money we got, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
How much do we pay them?
We don't pay them actually, no.
They don't charge a fee for wearing a credit card like everybody else?
Don't they charge them here?
I've never, no, the school doesn't pay it, yeah.
The parent, oh, like an extra three dollars or whatever fee it might be.
To be able to use their credit card to pay.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but the school doesn't pay anything for it.
And then I have one on the general fund. I was just curious, what did the Girl Scouts pay us for?
Um, the pool.
Pool.
The pool.
Yeah, the pool.
For lifeguards and supervising.
Any further discussion?
I was waiting for it. As I read through it, I'm like, Mark's gonna calculate it.
Oh, it's just been learned. There's no improvement in sight coming from that one.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
A opposed, have stayed. On the two thousand seventeen eighteen property tax report card. Do you have a motion to accept this?
A motion.
That's good.
Thank you.
Yep, this is something, um, that's approved every year and then submitted to the state. It shows this year's budget versus the proposed budget for next year and the tax rates for both. And it just provides the state our plan, so. It's also in the budget newsletter.
Just like this.
Yeah, yeah.
It's required.
Any further discussion on it? On favor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Um, I'm not asking for a discussion tonight, but I think, um, going forward, you probably need to consider, you know, the whole fund balance issue because it, it's gone down a little bit, but I think, um, I may need to take a closer look at that and see what we can do to manage that, um, make a little more progress. I, I don't, we've all talked about it, but I think we need to inform already next year, next budget go around, I think we need to really discuss that more fully and to be sure that when we do this report next year, it will show a more significant reduction. Would be my, my thought about it.
Yeah, I agree. We talked about it at length, the committee. Trying to balance that between showing the, um, where the state took money away from us and getting a return for that now, but.
DEA, gap elimination?
Yes, thanks, gap elimination. So, we're trying, we were trying to balance that, we'll take this down, but don't use it all so that we don't look like we still need the money that the state took away.
Exactly.
But yes.
It's a challenge, but I think it's, we just gotta tap at that actually.
Yep, absolutely.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A opposed, have stayed. Next, we have the HF and Moses sub list for May. We need to approve this.
Motion.
Second.
Have been highlighted, folks, are the new ones? Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
A opposed, have stayed. And next, we have surplus items. And a motion to approve as a consent on both of them, or you want?
It's up to you.
Someone so chose to do that, or we can do it manually?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Which one is it? I don't know.
What's, um.
I can't remember, this was Gary's last, the playground equipment. Something they're taking that playground out totally up there? This is the one up at north?
Well, this is the stuff that was taken out.
Oh, this is the stuff that was taken out, okay. Some of it was relocated down to the new playground?
The things were relocated.
Things were relocated in the playground, the kindergarten playground, uh, behind the building?
Behind the east hill you're talking about?
Uh huh.
Uh huh?
That, that most items were all relocated to.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any discussion on this list? Look at the other list too before Nick and.
Are the, I'm sorry? Are these things going to the auction or like the auction being?
With that online auction?
Uh huh.
And actually, some of this fitness equipment went on the last on, online auction. Nobody picked it up. Gary's, it's been like over six months, so. And he's tried to call them and they haven't come and picked it up, so.
I was gonna.
It's going bad.
Oh, really? Bought it and never picked it up?
Bought it and never came and picked it up.
So, now we're gonna sell it again?
He's tried to contact them, contacted them, they said they're coming, they've never come.
Maybe she'd raise the price then.
A little extra on the.
Uh huh, yeah.
And then the list of computers, maybe that? Are they all laptops?
Yeah, I had a question on that. Are these not able to be used? Are these not able to be used at all?
We rec, we recycle, recycle, recycle until they die. And there's just nothing, there's nothing else that we can do to support them or use them in any capacity.
The only reason I ask is we've talked about resources for students and
Yes.
I know sometimes on maintenance cycles, some things are dead and some things aren't dead.
Correct.
So I just wanted to ask, because if there's anything that has a use, then.
Yes, no. No.
Okay. It is, yes.
Well.
Tremendous number of deaths.
There's some, we have had, a lot of it has sat for quite a while downstairs as well, so inventory and re-inventory and making sure we have all of our work areas accurate. Mrs. Schultz is working on that before her retirement. That's what's helping move some of this along. So if you've been down in the basement, there's, there's dust on all of these, because they are no longer usable in any capacity.
Any further discussion? On paper?
Aye.
opposed, have say. Uh, next we have for these bid, um, and the bus subs.
Motion.
Second, thank you.
Tell me, can we put out the, um, option for this and these guys?
Only once, every year.
Which is who everybody likes now, so, all good?
Well, yeah, but it's like we put it out, this year, I didn't even get a phone call. Sometimes they get a phone call from Durham, but they didn't even call us this year, so.
So I just wanted to confirm that, because I couldn't remember when we met with, um, Harold, whether there were two regular buses and one handicapped, or one handicapped and one regular on the original budget that was given to us. So I just wanted to confirm that this was the budget. And I wanted to confirm that when we actually got the bid prices in, that it was what we had scoped.
Yes, it's under what we thought.
All right. I looked for that document, but I couldn't find it.
I was just wondering, um, are these prices higher or the same?
They're the, like, the two buses were seventeen five, so that comes under. So that would be, um, and the other one.
So these are actually a little bit less than last time?
Oh, I don't know about last time, but, but what we had put in the, um, in the bid.
In the bid, in the bid specifications.
In the bid specs. And the wheelchair bus came, was nineteen, no more than nineteen one, and it, this came in at eighteen, eighteen nine.
You mean lease payments?
Lease, yes, yes.
Okay.
So, and what we put up for, um, vote.
Um, I'd just be curious if we could find out what like the prices were for the ones that did last year. Um, not, not right now, but just, I'm just, I would just be curious on how fast the price is going up if it goes up.
I don't think they're really going up, but I can bet you on it.
Yeah, I'd just be interested.
The only, the only difference, they were a little concerned this year because interest rates started going up, so.
Gary did show that to us when he brought it to us the first time.
That he was worried about the interest rates in.
No, 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 he showed us the previous, um, these prices compared to the previous payments that he had had. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was very close. He.
Well, if that's.
Yes. But he did, he did show it to us before.
It was very close and he was waiting, or not, not waiting to get it in because of interest rates going up, that it would be a little bit higher.
Right.
So, got to get it quickly.
Right.
And it's not changed.
Yeah, because we had a committee meeting with him. I don't remember the exact number, but it was almost the same price or just a smidge cheaper, I think. But it was right in there, yeah.
That's right.
Okay. Fine, okay.
Let me, uh, see if we can get those numbers from Gary and still put it on.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Harold, I can get them to everybody tomorrow.
So put it in the future tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want everybody, he did show them to us before when we recruited.
I remember that, but I didn't know what he showed them.
I'm gonna be grateful. Any further discussion? On paper?
Aye.
opposed, have say. So the Palatine Nursing Home evacuation agreement? And the motion to approve, motion to second, thank you. What's going on with this one?
Oh, sorry. This is the, this is an annual, um, agreement that we have, that if there was a reason for the Palatine Nursing Home to be evacuated, we would be their evacuation site. This is an agreement that the district has had with the nursing home for quite a number of years. It is where you annually by the board.
That's, I couldn't figure out what it was for. And then it started talking about how much money gets given based on what they were subsidized by, and I was like, look, now I understand.
It's very simple.
So it's what they would have received as a, as a nursing.
Yes.
You haven't ever had to use it, it just has to be.
Yes.
Is it the nursing home that has to have this in place? It's not anything the school does.
No, they, they have got it in place once. They had a motor on a fish tank. Or a light on the fish tank, and they did, and they couldn't.
So we do put it in a swimming pool?
No. No, in like, in like their, um.
So it's got smoky or whatever they've done.
Right, and, and they couldn't find, they couldn't find where it was coming from for a little bit, so they did evacuate some. They did bring some residents over.
Uh, one of the recent benefits in the past fifty years. Yeah, it's pretty silly, I know.
Yes.
One of the recent, um, one of the enhancements certainly from our end as being a good neighbor is that we are now a certified Red Cross evacuation site. Mr. May and I have received all the appropriate training to do that in case it's ever needed. So that's just one additional piece that would be, of course, in that kind of a situation, another helpful resource.
Do you mean if there were, that would've been a natural disaster or something, we would be an evacuation site?
We have used it this, once this year.
Well, didn't they, they made Fort Plain the site.
There was, there was a site, uh, there was a time recently when we, where we had a few people here.
Yeah, yeah.
Before.
Before.
The Fort Plain.
They, they.
They worried about flooding and everything.
We opened up as evacuation site for a few years.
So if, if that happens, do we have cuts or somebody brings that kind of stuff?
No, that's our, that's our partnership with the Red Cross. They come in, their responsibilities for the site coordinators, which are Gary and I, and then the Red Cross has those responsibilities.
Are there any changes to this document from last year?
No.
Any further discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Opposed, have say. Okay, so if I put any motion to recess into executive session, it may for the purpose of discussing competition for a particular person or comment on more discussion, but in that, we can't, we can't ever stay wrong.
So who finally came?